For dates now, as far as when we should update on both the town and the board. Obviously, we're on the same financial system to 11.3. And that's one of the steps in our go-live for the payroll system is to upgrade to the higher version, which offers longer support for the payroll side of things. And then also, we hired a new payroll coordinator, and he started with us this past Monday. His job is going to be to run the parallels between Munis and Phoenix to make sure that we get to that 98, 99 percent that we need before we go-live. We're expecting to go-live January 11th, and we'll keep you updated. Billy?
Anything else?
Chris, what do you mean by go-live?
Go-live means to leave Phoenix behind and run the payroll completely on Munis. So, all of our people, 800 people, get paid out of the Munis system versus out of Phoenix, which is currently happening. We're paying in Phoenix and then crosswalking the transactions into Munis. Now, what will happen is, once we go-live, that means you'll see everything in the greatest detail on the Munis system. You'll see, if you drill down on the different accounts, you'll see salary accounts, you'll see the people's names, and the batches, and the amount of the pay, each bi-weekly pay.
In Phoenix, Phoenix will be gone.
We'll have to keep it legacy, meaning supported, off to the side, because we're not converting all the data over. So, if people want to have historical information, which frequently happens, we have to keep that system alive, but not for running payroll.
Mr. Johnson, you want to add? The other Johnsons, we have two. Because I know you've been leading this project, so I think we'll...
I think what Mr. Johnson said is, the real piece we want the board to know is, the town side and the board education side are married. It's important that everybody understands that. That's why we've been coordinating the town side and the board side, because we can't move one without moving the other.
I just have a question on the, well, this is, I love hearing this, because I've been working on this issue for a number of years, but you said about the upgrade from 10.5 to 11 point whatever, 11.3. Is the town also in that same place?
Exactly. They're on, we're both on 10.5, and we'll both move to 11.3 on the same day.
Okay.
On whatever date we decide, which...
They literally share the same platform, the same server, same infrastructure powering Munis for both.
It's only, it's only the secure, it's only the data security that divides the two.
Right, right.
So, let me explain how this happened. The team meet on a regular basis, actually, every week, week to two, they chart finance need to go over, and they meet with Tyler, or speak with Tyler on the phone, and they hammer all the different tasks that need to be done, etc. So, it has been a task, but as you can see, we're getting it done.
And another thing, that we're going to be buying a few more support days, and those support days will help us to have people onsite when we go-live in January from Tyler. So, they'll be working with us to, you know, to work out any issues we're coming up against.
Okay, so this is going to integrate the payroll services for all town employees, Board of Education employees into a single, a single financial service. What about the, I mean, the whole thing about combining financial services is that there's more to that than just payroll. So, where are we with the rest of the combination, say, personnel records and...
Oh, not personnel records.
I thought there were some personnel records, because you have to have at least some personnel in there to know how much to pay people, right?
So, the personnel issues that will be in Munis will be hours and time and pay, but it's not, it's not a personal system, it's a financial system. And we have discussed, can we add additional files to have a personal system, but it does not, it does not allow us to do that. So, HR will continue to have an HR system. From HR, what would be in Munis, and you guys can correct me or add to it, would be the time, the hours, what else would be in there from first from HR?
Salary time.
Those are all the time, nothing else would be in there.
The good news is that there will be some, a lot of benefit on the maintenance side, because Phoenix HR and Phoenix payroll were not linked, and there was a lot of duplication of work. In this case, they are linked, and information in benefits or HR translates over into the payroll side. So, that's a big plus for us.
Well, the benefits are financial, right? So, there's, there should be a connection between the benefit, employee benefits and the financial system, correct?
Well, there are some things in there, right Rita? TRB?
Right, but in Phoenix, they were separate, and they weren't connected.
Correct.
But in Munis, they are connected.
They are connected.
And then, and then how about the rest of the financial information system that will presumably shorten the amount of time that it takes to get all of the town and board audits done?
Yeah, we're in a much better spot now, as far as the timeline for audits, because now we have been live for three years, and now we, we also, it was a combination of both system, moving to a unified system, and also on some staffing issues, both on town and board side. But now, we've got those settled, and I see us being in a much better spot, and we are.
Well, you do, much less time to enter a personnel, an employee in the Munis system than in the Phoenix system. The Phoenix system takes about 49 minutes to enter a person. In the Munis system, it'll take how much Rita, to enter, much less than that.
Yeah, and we're not duplicate entering.
We're a duplicate entering, right.
We're duplicating in HR and payroll.
Just to give you a sense of some of the quantity, for the benefit side, based on how many different co-shares we have and plans that we have, we're only entering 48 pieces of information to get the benefit table updated. On the Phoenix side, it was over 700.
Hundred, to enter.
700 pieces of data that had to be entered, and it didn't communicate with the payroll piece.
Okay.
So, I'm sorry, I came out of the insight, you said January is when it's going to be ready to go live?
January 11th, I think Rita, we said. And that's the first, which is good for us, because it's past the holidays, and also we'll, you know, we shouldn't have any timing issues.
Okay. So, how much, how much of the combination of the financial services, Board of Ed and Town, remains to be done? At what point can we say we've combined the financial operation?
That's a good question, Dr. Sewell. We've been talking with the town manager pretty frequently, Dr. Garcia and myself, and they asked me to put together a roadmap, a framework, which I did, along with timelines and people that are going to be completing the tasks. And we're, with everybody's, you know, support, we should be done by, everything completed by July of next year, June of next year, with a lot of the deliverables done mid-year. But the pieces that relate to the budget still being toward the end of the year, because in theory, you, what we wanted to do was to isolate the finance department's financials, and then just do transfers in to cover the cost of it. That was one of the ideas. That would be done during the budgetary process. But the other pieces were looking at people's salary ranges at the town and on the board side, and to make sure that there was equal pay for equal work, because there was a, in some positions, there is equality, in some positions, there is not equality. So, we want to narrow the gap, and we care, we compared ourselves internally and externally to other towns, to make sure that, you know, the recommendations that we make to the town manager and to Dr. Garcia makes sense, that we benchmarked, and, you know, we're going to move the people in line, and have similar position names as well. So, that's all going forward in the next five or six months.
Mr. Rivers and I approve of what Chris called a roadmap with some dates and who will be involved, and we approve it, and I believe he's sending it to the tri, to the tri board.
The tri board.
Less, I think, less on our side to get done, but more on the town side of bringing up the job description and bringing up to our position.
The salaries.
So, salaries and job description, much more on their side than our side, and negotiating with their unions, they aim at you to move over to our union. So, those are the things that need to be done.
And be able to possibly, you know, move peoples when you need them to help.
Well, that was, that's the question that I had, because, since I'm not on that ad hoc committee anymore. So, part of this consolidation and moving people, you know, getting parity, and then getting them all into one union rather than having separate negotiating bodies. The idea was to do cross-training, right, among staff, so that, so that there would be staff that would know how to do things in town as well as the board of it. And what is, when you say that July deadline or whatever of next year, is, is that a point at which that will have happened, or that we'll be able to start then?
Well, no, I think the cross-training piece is...
Is happening now?
Some is happening now.
Remember, AP is AP.
Right.
Running checks on the town side, running checks on the board side. The only thing different is the accounts that you're using, and maybe the quantity, okay? But otherwise, that person could step into that other person's role overnight. Payroll might be more difficult, as far as, because of the difficulty of the board payroll versus the difficulty of the town payroll. So, that's less of a, right, but simpler things could be done by that person, rather than setting up people's pay in Munis.
Right, okay. So, where functions can be cross-trained, so that you have more flexibility and deployment of staff to meet needs in the, in the flow of the year's work? That's, that'll be a big plus in the long run.
Yeah, it will be, and the way we're thinking of approaching it is, rather than doing the union combination, is leave these people in their union, leave these people in their union, but have a memorandum of understanding that says, when we need you to help out, you're going to come and help us out over at the town side or on the board side.
Okay.
And that could be because people have leave of absence, or, you know...
Retirement benefits, and things like that.
You know, just sudden, you know, people give their notice, and we need somebody to pitch in for a couple of weeks or a month.
Sounds like you've made a lot of headway over the summer.
Yeah, oh, definitely.
Yeah, it helps with the new town manager, he's, he's working well with Dr. Garcia and myself, and he seems to be pushing it, so we're going to...
So, we meet twice a month and discuss this matter, and so things are moving smoothly.
Thanks.
So, the next topic, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
The next topic is, is our technology, and, and we definitely are moving this year to look at personalized learning and technology. Particularly, we're looking at starting with grade six and grade nine. We have some funds allocated to invest in techno, in, in, in technology, and we want to make sure that students are engaged, and we know that they use different type of technology at home, and we want to make sure that engage using technology in the classroom. So, Mr. Brendan O'Neill and Mr. Johnson are going to talk to you about our technology plan for this year. Again, we're starting with grade six and grade nine at the high school.
So, the first thing I'll say is, the big piece about this is building a platform and infrastructure, the experts here. But what I did was work with Brendan and kind of figure out, how do we roll this out, so we know exactly when the infrastructure will be in place, and at the same time, Dr. Garcia gave us kind of, start with six, start with nine, and then roll it out. So, there's a lot of details, I think, you know, if you don't mind, we want to jump to specifically year one, year two, year three. Google Suite has just about everything you can think of, it's a platform. We're not going to go into all the web pages and things of that nature, and I'm going to hand it over to Brendan specifically, so he can talk about the rollout plan.
Thank you. So, for year one, like he said, we're talking, focusing on grade six and nine. We're looking at purchasing Lenovo Chromebooks for the classrooms, based on the number of students. When they get these devices in sixth grade, the device they get in sixth grade is going to move forward with them to seventh and eighth. They'll get a new device at ninth, which will move forward with them through high school. So, it's going to be, the new devices going to the younger students each year. For the beginning, when they're first getting used to having these devices, we're looking at purchasing charging carts to go in the schools. So, for the first three to six months, or first, up to half, the first half of the year, the students will use the devices in the classroom every day, but they'll be stored at school until the students and the parents and the teachers learn the expectations and how to use the hardware. So, in year one, we'd be looking at about 487 Chromebooks that we're rolling out. Like I said, they'd use them in school only, as they become comfortable with them, secured in carts. During December or January, we would hold a parent information night, where we would go over the expectations for use at home, help them sign up for internet at home if they don't already have it, that sort of thing, and have them sign off on the acceptable use policy, before we look at rolling out, having the devices go home with the students in January. The end of the school year, the devices would come back, and we'd hold on to them over the summer and do our maintenance on them and so forth. Year two, those students would come back and get their devices right away, go home with them right away, and we'd start rolling them out to the new sixth and ninth graders.
What devices specifically are we talking about?
Chromebooks.
Chromebooks.
Chromebooks, yes.
So, that's the only one, no tablets, nor anything else?
We looked at a number of things. The Chromebooks have the best mix of affordability, support, and price.
And price.
Price especially.
Price especially.
I noticed on the previous slide, even though that's something of an eye test from here, my glasses seem to be working tonight, it says, equipment usage fee, how much is that?
Board policy has that stated at $55 per year.
Per year.
With an option to break it up into two payments for parents who need it, and obviously, anything, even if there's a parent who can't afford it.
Well, there's a couple of things. You're using Google Suite, right? Which means that a student could use a desktop, or laptop, even a, even a computer at home. So, they wouldn't necessarily have to lease the Chromebook from the, the school. But the other thing is, is that some students might have financial difficulty coming up with the $55, and probably would not have that connectivity at home.
Something, you know, as far as the $55, I probably have to come before the board again to clarify it, since it is stated in policy, but I think we would have to provide a mechanism for making individual exceptions for those students.
We may have to do some grant writing or fundraising. The other issue is, is that you still need internet access at home, correct?
You do need internet access at home, there is a limited amount of stuff you can do on a Chromebook, even if you don't have internet access. Obviously, we're 85 percent of it, you do need internet access. The good thing is, in this area, as part of Charter's agreement, when they merged last year with all those other companies, is for any of our students, since we're actually provision two for a food service, where all of our students receive free meals, all of our students are also eligible to have discounted internet at home. I believe they charge $10 or $15 a month, and that can also be used towards the FCC Lifeline program, which can help subsidize that even further, so...
Brendan, if I may, I think the $55 in board policy was for, if the Chromebooks were misplaced or stolen or something like that?
It's, the policy stated as a $55 per year usage fee.
Yeah, for everyone, but it does to replace it in case...
Right, it covers, that way, if they, you know, they break whatever, it covers repairs, it covers replacements, if they lose it or stolen, right.
Trans policy, right.
It would be a self-insure policy versus going out to a third party, and so it'd be more economical that way, but...
So, your slide says Lenovo, but, but you can get a Chromebook from lots of people. Is it, are we basically going to go out for bids on this thing, or have we gone out for bids already?
We have, we haven't gone out for bids. What we have done is bought a lot of demo units in, seen what works best in the classrooms, what has the best reliability, best support options and so forth. As for actually purchasing them, the vendor we've been working with is on a purchasing consortium, which the district is a member of, so...
So, it's from the list?
Yeah.
It's on the list already.
So, perhaps, maybe, not a question for you, but have these, the use of these devices been incorporated to the curriculum? I mean, there are various...
That is being worked on.
...groups are going to do with it?
That is being...
And teachers have been trained in doing this and that?
I can answer that.
Sure.
So, the teachers that are, the two grades that are going to be using this right now will be six and nine, purposely. Those are the teachers that are receiving training, and through the Center for High School Redesign, of how to incorporate inquiry-based and project-based in through their curriculum. So, you have teachers from sixth grade and teachers from ninth grade are the only ones that are receiving this training. They went to New Hampshire in the summer, and actually, they're getting training again in October tenth, and some teacher was visiting some school in Massachusetts, right Tracy? Two from the high school, two from the middle school. So, these are the only two teachers that we're, the only grade that we're training right now, we're not training anybody else to use them.
Are they going to receive, like, actual training on how to set up, like, a Google Doc assignment and share it with their students? Because I, I use Google Classroom and I love it, but I know a lot of teachers in my building who have normal training on it, and a lot of them resorted to YouTube, which was great, but it's taking a lot of...
So, that's in our plan, I would like Mr. Johnson to answer that question, but yes, because I don't know how to use it, Mr. Johnson.
So, you, that is the question, that's a good question. So, Brendan and I, when we sat down, we've kind of unpacked all the things that had to happen before all this happened. And the number one thing was access and time for teachers, not just training, but also time just to do it, right? And those specific grade levels, they have common planning time. So, we know the time exists. What we're working on, and also working with Dr. Youngberg, is you want to make sure, obviously, you're doing it in a systemic way, so you're not interrupting the other things. We have a timeline, that's why it's important, that's why we're sharing this with you. This timeline around purchasing is then going to determine kind of, when the input date, when to start inputting the training around this. So, the time is there, we're just trying to figure out, we want to land the right way. So, there's a lot of pieces, we don't want teachers, to take teachers away from one thing to do something else. We want to make sure, okay, they're doing this, laptops are going to arrive this date, and we know they have common planning time, so we're not taking away from their traditional PD. And what we found is, they just need time to actually do it.
And we added the Monday, 90 minutes PD, that some of them will be training during the Monday night. So, we're not taking away time from Dr. Youngberg, we just want to use the additional time.
And I want to give up some time, because Google Classroom is going to help us get to our academic goal.
It is, definitely.
We might need to absolutely, time efficiency, so we are, Brendan and I have already started talking about how we can roll that out.
Yep. So, that, that sums up year one. Year two, we're pretty much just rolling it up. Like I said, the seventh and 10th graders would get the same computer they had the year before, we would go out to them right away. We'd be purchasing, you know, based on current enrollment, about 450 Chromebooks for the incoming sixth, ninth graders. Again, we would do the same graduated rollout, where they learn how to use the devices, how to take care of them, their expectations in the school, before sending them home somewhere around the holiday break. Year three, again, it's just shifting everything up again. Left timelines, year one, from the time we have purchase order approval, it's going to take about two weeks to get the equipment in from the vendor, and then it's going to take my team about three weeks to have all the equipment prepped and out to the schools ready for the students to start using. Years two and three, over the summer, all the Chromebooks that came back in from the previous year will be evaluated, repaired if necessary, cleaned up, that sort of thing. And then, assuming we have approval and a budget, at the beginning of the fiscal year, the purchase order for the new equipment will go out July 1st, and everything will be ready by the time students arrive in late August.
Is this part of this year's budget, or is this part of next year's budget?
Part of this year, this, this year, this first year is part of this year's budget.
Yes.
So, you guys are ready to go. Does this mean extra staff on your part? Because I know often, especially in the summer, you have staff running around like crazy trying to get all the buildings ready, technology-wise, for the coming year, doing repairs, smartboards, all that kind of stuff. If you're adding another 450 smartbook, Chromebooks, whatever they are, on top of that...
So, the first two years might be a little crazy, as we're doing, having both the new Chromebooks and maintaining the existing infrastructure. But as we start phasing out what's currently existing, as the students have the one-to-one and the Chromebooks, we're finding that the management and repair and maintenance of them is actually substantially less than what we currently have. So, we're hopeful that by retiring the older equipment and using the newer stuff, which Google provides great centralized management for, and so on and so forth, that we'll be able to maintain the higher number of devices with the same number of staff.
And are you going to move Barrows from tablets to the Chromebook?
Eventually.
Well, I just think, the two platforms are going to be difficult to...
Absolutely.
...be able to sustain for a year.
I think what we, I think before we start interrupting what's already working at Barrows, roll this out to the two grades at the middle school and high school, and then start looking at...
So, the sixth graders at Barrows won't get the Chromebooks?
Not this year.
No, not this year.
Self-life was considered. There's a much more self-life with these devices.
Well, something else is, at Barrows, a lot of their equipment was meant to be hooked up Bluetooth-wise to the iPads and stuff like that, like the microscopes and some of the stuff they take out in the field. My son went to Barrows, some of the stuff they take out in the field to do measurements and stuff like that, and I don't know how well it'll transition to the Chromebooks.
That's one thing we have to look at, yeah.
Already gotten set in place there, but I know it'll be difficult to support both platforms, on the part of you and your staff, so...
So, yeah, the support of this thing is, interests me, I tell you, you've already considered that there's enough Wi-Fi capacity in the buildings to handle that many connections, because that one's kind of obvious. But, but I suspect Chromebooks are susceptible to malware and viruses as anything else that you put on the internet, and, and students being students will explore beyond the limits of what we tell them to do. And so, there may be some tech support issues as a result of them clicking on things that maybe they, we would have preferred that they didn't click on. So, have you got the capacity to deal with all of that?
I believe we do. There isn't as much malware and viruses out there for Chrome, since it runs very little natively on the Chromebook. Most of it's just HTML5 rendering, which is very limited in what it can do. The other nice thing about Chrome devices is they can very easily be factory reset and pushed back out within a matter of 10 or 20 minutes, versus like a Windows machine if we have to completely reimage it, that's an hour-plus job.
And, and when you're, you think about it, when you're trying, when Brendan or a team member is going to maintenance these things, they're all one place. You understand what I'm saying? It's not as if a person now has to go to this room, to this room, to this room. You take a cart, and you can line them up and start doing this. So, there is time savings around maintenance.
That's true, until the students start taking them home.
I get it, that part.
And then they start coming back and, and there's a, my wife is full, her computer has a, has a browser redirect on it, that I have to figure out how to get rid of. And HTML5 is vulnerable to browser redirect, which means that you, you have, you have something on your page and you click on it, and it sends you somewhere other than where you want it to go.
There is some susceptibility to that there. The other nice thing about the Google platform is, most of those browser redirects are run as native code, not within the browser, so that eliminates most of them. But even the ones that are within the Google management platform, we can restrict what browser extensions and plugins the students are able to use, so that they can't install, like, you know, Ultra Surf is this thing that they often like to try to install to go around our filtering, but we can block the installation of anything other than what we've approved.
Good, okay.
I don't know if it's still the case, but for the longest time, if you tried to go on Facebook while you were in any of our district buildings, they redirect you to the card catalog in the library. Brendan did that, and I was pretty proud of that.
It doesn't do that anymore, but we actually do that for a while.
It's like, Brendan, I'm trying to check email, he's like, go off.
As you started having some staff with legitimate uses of Facebook in the district, we had to take that away, but that was a good one for a little while.
I did a workshop, a Cabe workshop, and we're sitting around in a bunch of different towns, and some of them were more wealthy than ours, and in Canton, they said that they had gone to a one-on-one, and for me, that means special ed, if you have a one-on-one, you know, it's a one student to one staff member, and I was like, wow, you did a one-on-one for your whole district? You have one staff member for every student? And they're like, no, technology. And I said, well, when the students take them home, what if they don't have Wi-Fi? And they looked at me like I was speaking a foreign language, and they said, people in your town don't have Wi-Fi? And I was thinking of all the other things that they have to spend their money on. So, I'm excited that we're able to do this, but I'd like to be mindful and keep it our forefront of our thoughts, that just because a child takes us home doesn't mean they can necessarily always access it, and to try and do whatever we can to make sure that they can, budgetarily and, you know, structurally.
I mean, thankfully, a lot of the housing complexes in town have free Wi-Fi for the residents too, so there's, there's a lot of...
The Wyndham Library has free Wi-Fi, and they're, I mean, we can look to the possibility of expanding it to other places, but...
Right.
But we also probably are going to have to find some way to raise some support money for at least a few students.
I'm pretty sure.
There's some, you know, what it comes down to, there are some relatively affordable options for...
The summary, how do you prepare?
We are prepared, yes.
We are prepared for this.
We are.
Yeah.
Anything else?
Thank you, any more questions?
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, that's, the item four on the agenda requires the presence of all nine board members. We don't have everyone present. Uh, we don't have everyone present this evening, so, uh, we'll just have to eliminate that from the agenda tonight and put it back on at our next meeting and hope that-
At our next meeting.
At the meeting in October.
I won't be at the October eleventh meeting.
You're not gonna be on October eleventh?
I let you, I let you know at the retreat.
Okay.
Yeah. Not me neither.
So, oh, alright.
I know, I remember-
Do we have, do we have a workshop meeting in October? I think we do, alright. We'll try then if we have to. Um, okay, so, do we have any, uh, public dialogue? Anyone wanna make, uh, any comments on the presentations this evening? Yes? Two minutes. Oops.
I'm supposed to use this one here? Break, I'll tell you what, let's say, Wallen Street. At this seminar that, uh, the board went to, they were supposed to come up with some ideas for more realism as to what's gonna happen with this project, this one point, I mean, this hundred twelve million dollar project. And in a few minutes, you're gonna go into executive session to, uh, give the superintendent an extension of time and additional pay. Personally, I think some of the payments that are made to some of the people in our local government are, are a little, a little excessive right now. And something like this, I feel, with what's coming down the road, you know, what's been given the people to make the decision on, is a lot lacking and I feel that this board and this superintendent needs to step forward post haste to put something on the table that these people can really chew on before they go into those booths to vote on, something that is gonna affect this town for a long, long time. So, I'm suggesting that, rather than hand an extended period of time for the superintendent to whoever comes into these seats after the election, which I am hoping to see many new, as many new faces as possible, I think the fair and proper thing to do would be to extend only the amount of time necessary to place this issue into the hands of the new faces that are gonna be taking the responsibility of this board. To do otherwise would be, uh, a negative, a negative move in my opinion. So, uh, when you go into that room and have your little executive session, which I might add, this town uses that executive session to an excess. Cause I've been watching around in this state, listening to a lot of things and, you know, nowhere near does, do other towns go into executive session as much as this place, not only on the board here, but also down in the town hall. So that's something else you need to chew on. People need to know what's going on and you people say you want transparency and exposure. One thing I suggest also that, in the future, don't be taking your meetings over to the Kramer Building, what little time you have left in there. And if, if the reason you do it, I don't know, why can't you have it here? Even if you don't have the person filming it, because what I heard is, the reason you don't have someone there filming is cause it, you cost money to pay that person. Well, why don't you just keep those meetings here? Why do you make it more difficult for people to find parking and everything over at the other place? So chew on that too. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else that would like to make comment? Okay. So your next item on the agenda is, uh, executive session, uh, with a discussion of possible action regarding the superintendent's contract and compensation.
I'd like to make the motion to go into executive session for the discussion of possible action regarding the superintendent's contract and compensation. I'd like to invite, I'd like to invite Dr. Garcia to be, at least at the beginning of that executive session if we could.
Okay.
I have no problem with that.
Motion made and seconded?
He's seconding.
Yes, that's right, it's, it's, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so we'll go into executive session as soon as the room is, is cleared.